All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the December 17th Board of Commissioners meeting. And tonight, we have the Reverend Perry Price to lead us in vacation and then Officer Doi Ott from the Police Department to lead us in the Pleasant Legion. So those who are willing and able, please stand. Reverend Price?
Hello, how you doing? Also, Lord, I want to bless the Commissioners and bless the ones that work for the Commissioners and also bless the ones that come in here. And, Lord, I ask you to bless the ones that are having problems. Bless the ones on the outside, Lord, and bless the law enforcements through Christ Jesus. Amen.
Pleasant Legion, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well, I took my cue from you. Thank you, Reverend Price. Okay, we have a couple presentations tonight, and I think Commissioner Burl Weatherford would like us to have the board join him down front for the first one. And the second one, too. Okay, just stay down there. If my jacket blinds you, you could put on sunglasses, it's okay.
Good evening, everyone. It's our honor and pleasure to recognize Keep Cobb Beautiful tonight. And if you could all come up, staff, volunteers, board. Keep Cobb Beautiful, under the direction of Kimberly White, coming up first, has been very successful in winning state, national, and local awards. And this year, I think they walked away with more than ever in the history. So, um... Last week, we went to Macon for the Keep Georgia Beautiful Awards Luncheon. And Keep Cobb Beautiful ran away with the state award for litter prevention category by the South Cobb Lions Club, state award for community improvement, Keep Cobb Beautiful, state award waste reduction and recycling, Keep Cobb Beautiful, affiliate innovation award, Keep Cobb Beautiful, and affiliate of the year award, Keep Cobb Beautiful. But it doesn't stop there. Our Law Enforcement Officer of the Year is Precinct 4's Community Engagement Officer, Natalie Jegg. Our Public Works Employee of the Year Award was given to Jonathan Jenkins from Cobb County Solid Waste. And our Executive Director of the Year Award was given to Kimberly White. And last but not least, our own Commissioner Lisa Cupid got the Elected Official of the Year Award. Front and center, Lisa. So, they really cleaned up. And I'm just excited because I was on this board for 10 years before I was a Commissioner, so it's very near and dear to my heart. Millie was the founder, one of the co-founders of Cobb Clean Commission, so we're very supportive of Keep Cobb Beautiful. And so, we're going to present Litter Prevention Award to the South Cobb Lion Club, Barry Krebs, who got the Volunteer of the Year Award last year, the Man of the Year. And Kimberly White, our Director of the Year Award, Jonathan Jenkins. So, thank you to all of you, the board. We need to introduce the board members, too. Staff Dawn and Diego are staff. Jack Segal and Aaron Mulgrew are District 3 appointees to the board. And Kimberly, and Willie, come up here. Our Agency Director over at Keep Cobb Beautiful and Solid Waste. You want to say anything, Mr. Man of the Year?
Well, just thank you very much. We appreciate everybody, all the Commissioner's support. This is very important work we're doing.
Our volunteers make us look very good. I mean, and staff, our business partners, our community partners, they're the reasons that we're up here and that I know that I'm up here. So, just want to encourage us to keep Cobb continuing to be beautiful. I also need to pay homage to Commissioner Burl, who was last year's elected official of the year. And this may be one of the first years we've had them come from the same county. So, it's back-to-back like that. So, it's good to be able to walk, try to walk in her shoes in helping to keep our community clean. And can't help but recognize the Woman of the Year this year, which is our Director of Keep Cobb Beautiful, who's done a phenomenal job for us here in Cobb County.
Thank you, everybody. I just want to say, I'm just really proud of us for working so hard like we do throughout the year. And I'm just really glad that we are recognized by the State of Georgia, because I know that everybody works so hard, all of our staff and our volunteers.
Congratulations again, and now we'll get a picture.
He's got a gun, I want you next to me. All right, thank you.
You guys all stay down here. So, I asked the board to stay down here with me, and I think when you hear the next proclamation or certificate, you're going to understand why. This is like a classy example of the caliber of the employees we have here in the county and how they go above and beyond. So, let me tell you a little bit about Officer Rashad. Why don't you come on up here? And all the other public safety folks that are here with him? No, you don't want to get over there by him, especially the guy in the red coat. So, this is a certificate of recognition presented to Officer Anthony Rashad, Cobb County Police Department. Officer Rashad and Officer Lindsay were responding to a fire at the Stone Ridge Edvining Apartments located on Mission Ridge Lane. Officer Rashad arrived first and learned that a resident had gone back inside their apartment to retrieve a set of keys. When Officer Rashad reached the apartment door, thick smoke was now billowing out. From the doorway, Officer Rashad called out to the resident and heard the man respond that he could not see to get out. At that point, Officer Rashad entered the apartment on his hands and knees without protective gear, located the man, and was able to get him out safely out of the apartment prior to the firefighters arriving. His heroic deeds were detailed in an incident report submitted by Officer Lindsay, who arrived on the scene shortly after the man was rescued. And then, the rest goes, "Thank you for your bravery and unwavering commitment to serve the community." Thank you very much. Now, since I know you won't say anything, I'm going to let them say something over here.
Well, Officer Rashad, you know, we're proud of him and the job that he does on a daily basis. And he's just an example of what a Cobb County Police Department does, and they're committed to this community, serving the department, serving the community. And it takes a lot of courage to run into a burning house. And I'm proud of him. And what I'd like to do is give his chain of command an opportunity to say a few words and may not take the microphone for the whole time. Here you go.
Thanks, Chief. Officer Rashad, that was a tremendous response that you had, and to put your life on the line without protective gear to go in there and search for this guy, find him, and then you had to encourage him, because I'll fill in some of the blanks. He wasn't finding his way out really well, and he was going a little bit too slow, wasn't he? So, he had to encourage him just a tad to get him out and get him safely out, but what you do is a great demonstration of what we expect from our officers on a day-to-day basis. So, thank you so much for setting the standard. Thank you so much for putting your life on the line to assist a citizen that was in need, and thanks for being a great part of our department. We appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. I'll keep this very brief. So, basically, Officer Rashad pulled this guy out of a burning building, and no, he doesn't want to be a firefighter, but it's just one of the things that we do. No. Officer Rashad's happy where he is right now. It's all part of our, what we do every day, what he does every day. It's courage to go in there and do what needed to be done without even thinking about it. So, thank you very much.
Thanks again. All right, we've got to do the picture, you know that. This isn't going to work. You're going to have to let, you've got to get in the front.
Again, congratulations. What a great way to start an evening program here and also a great representative of the kind of people we have that work for Cobb County and can never say enough good things about them. So, now we have a public hearing. I believe Dana, or Michael Hughes, all right.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, County Manager. The purpose of this agenda is to conduct a public hearing and approve a Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate of Compliance for the construction of a single-family home to be located at 710 Atlanta Country Club Drive. By way of background, the subject property was submitted to the Atlanta Regional Commission for review and comment as mandated by the Metropolitan River Protection Act of 1973. The Act requires that the local government review all land disturbing activities proposed in the Chattahoochee River Corridor and that in terms, to be sure that it's consistent with the guidelines for the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan. The Atlanta Regional Commission staff has completed its review and determined that these plans are consistent with the guidelines for the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan. Staff would request that you conduct a public hearing at this time.
Okay, so, the ground rules are unlimited number of speakers, and we do come up to speak, just please let us know who you are and where you live. And you have three minutes. So, with that, I now declare this public hearing open about to approve the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate of Compliance for construction of a single-family residential home at 710 Atlanta Country Club Drive. With that, would anyone like to address the board on this issue? Would anyone like to address the board on this issue? Seeing none, I now declare this public hearing closed, and Commissioner Ott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to make a motion to approve the issuance of the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate of Compliance for construction of a single-family residential building at 710 Atlanta Country Club Drive.
Second?
Second, and discussion? Call to question. Pass is five to zero. Thank you. And, okay. And now, we have a public comment. How many people have signed up tonight?
Your four speakers, the first is Patrick Borderland.
Okay.
Come forward, please.
And again, the guidelines are five minutes per speaker, and just let us know who you are and where you live. I appreciate it for the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyce. I won't need five minutes. So, Merry Christmas to all of you. Commissioner Weatherford, thank you for your service to the county. It's been a joy to work with you, and we look forward to seeing you in the future. My name is Patrick Borderland, I'm the Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Powder Springs. I'm here tonight on behalf of Mayor Thurman, who had a previous engagement. I'm speaking on behalf of the mayor and the majority of our city council, who support the proposed sale of our water system to Cobb County. The main reason that we support this is it'll benefit our residents by reducing the water bills by almost 30%. The second reason is that the county is better able to maintain our water system than we are, because you have an economy of scale. You can do things cheaper than we can, which will keep the rates lower. So, we're in favor of this. One thing I want to point out is that the deal is $5.5 million to be paid over 10 years in equal payments of $550,000 a year. There would be no public money that would be used in this deal. The revenue, the $550,000 per year would be accrued from revenue received from operating our water system. So, no tax money would be spent on this. Also, I want to point out that the intention of what we're hoping to do with the revenue that we receive is to apply that toward a debt reduction for the City of Powder Springs to pay off a couple of our existing bonds, to delegate that money to go to that bond payment, so that we can reduce our long-term debt. So, that's another reason. It's a win-win for everybody. We hope you'll approve it. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Any member of the board have any questions? While we're here? Okay, we're good. Thank you. Appreciate you coming tonight. Merry Christmas.
Yes.
The next speaker is David Birkenbine.
David, it's good to have you back. We've missed you.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, County Manager, David Birkenbine, Mapleton. Next year, we're going to talk about enforcement of the law. We tried to change it last year, so we're going to talk about enforcing what we have on the books. I sent you all an email on two words that we're going to be using. One is exemptions and prohibitions. So, if we try to combine these in the county or the Fire Department, try to combine them both together, by everybody else's standards, that ain't supposed to work, because there's two different meanings. But we'll get into that next year. Medical burn ban in Cobb County is what I'm on Facebook, and we are here to inform and educate the effects of smoke on people that live in Cobb County. With a population of 740,000, with a population per square mile of 2,240 people, you have a few people that think it's okay to invade your airspace, trespass on your property by the nuisance of burning yard debris, fire bowls, fire pits, chimneys, or whatever they want to burn in, because they believe that is their right, and you and the other 2,000 citizens in that one square mile just have to tolerate their burning. These few people, not the majority, are backed by the Fire Marshal, the Fire Chief, Public Safety, along with the county commissioners, making the items legal and the prohibition law null and void on outdoor burning, especially the medical burn ban for chronically ill people who applied for the medical burn ban by completing a form from the Fire Marshal's office, which was approved to protect them from outdoor burning. Don't take the abuse and write or call and voice your outrage to you Commissioners, Chairman Boyce, Georgia Public Health, Cobb County Public Department, Health Department, Cobb 2020, all of whom are against secondhand smoke, except they pick and choose which secondhand smoke they want to enforce. There's plenty of information on my page in the Medical Burn Ban Cobb, along with Cobb County Code references. The Cobb County Code gives you, the citizens, to have the fire and any fire put out if it affects you medically, affects your quality of life, affects your use of property. These laws are for all citizens, with or without medical burn ban, so you need to gain your rights back. We need to just enforce the laws on the books and not interpret what they are not. We are here to empower you and get you your clean air and enjoyment of your property and health back. So, we'll be speaking on that all next year, because I figured I just have six hours a month that I could bear, that's 72 hours a year. I do that babysitting, so, you know. And maybe we'll have, I'll see new faces probably, because I'll be here hopefully for a long time. I'll be 70 next year, so... But if we can't enforce this, we can't even enforce the covered bridge. And what tops it off, it was a senior citizen bus that drove through the covered bridge. Oh, the van top of fit, but the bus won't fit. Then we have cars on a single-lane bridge, try to go and get lodged on the bridge. Really? That's crazy. Why can't you put "No Truck" sign up there on Concord Road off Hicks? Because they, well, I guess they won't see that sign, because they can't see the flashing lights, they can't see the arrows. Tractor and trailers go down that road every day. We followed a Pepsi truck down that way. There was another 18-wheeler that went down that road. So, is this GPS going to cost the county anything because the people can't read, because all they, you know, they're pushing these buttons? And the blight, we have to fix the blight in South Cobb. Our poster child of Mother's finest down there, nothing's been done. I got 12 signatures in 2017. It took a lot of work to get 12 signatures on three properties individually, not turned in on one sheet of petition. I turned them in, and the man that was in charge of, well, it wasn't black then, it was a basement, of Mr. Duncan, he goes out and looks, well, we can't do nothing with it. Well, he's still not doing nothing with it. So, but I'll be back next year. Thank you. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, David. Good to have you back.
The next speaker is Larry Thomas.
Good evening, Chairman Boyce, County Commissioners. And sat I'm Larry Thomas, I'm a resident of Powder Springs. And just so that you guys know, like the chairman, I'm a retired military officer, spent 23 years in the Army, came here in 96, took over the command of recruiting for Northwest Georgia, retired in 2000 and made Cobb County our home. I recently moved to Powder Springs and immediately started getting involved in the community, joining the American Legion, and attending city government zoning and planning meetings whenever I can. I expect our local government to be open, honest, and transparent in their leadership. Unfortunately, I do not see this where the issue of the Water Department is concerned. We have been told since early this year that the cost to update the pipes was close to $30 million or more. This price sounded extremely high, so I got in contact with Mr. McCullers, and he told me he had no idea where that number came from, that they had inspected about one-third of the pipes, and they were in very good shape. And we now have a new technology using a thin sleeve that gets inserted into them that will prolong the life of these pipes for many, many years to come. The cost for this is estimated at less than $700,000. Big difference from $30 million. Yet, $30 million was the same price quoted in two recent Marietta Daily Journal articles, and it's what the mayor and city manager continue to use. There is approximately $5.7 million in our water reserve. A few years ago, the city borrowed $1 million from it to buy buildings and property and have yet to make any repayment. By selling the water, they no longer have to repay the loan, and they could spend the $6 million however they want, on top of having raised our property taxes to pay for a 1.9% shortfall. I truly appreciated Chairman Boyce doing the town hall meetings about the Cobb County property tax hike. I supported it. I didn't like it, I didn't want it. Between them and the city, my property tax doubled. So, having said that, I still find it amazing that you would consider voting in favor of what is alleged to be a $30-plus-million-cost in the same year you raised our property tax to make up a $30-million shortfall. We've asked our city leadership for town hall meetings to hear the facts, ask questions, and voice our opinion. We were denied. Even our city council members are not being given the proper information, and I'm not sure you've been given the correct information either. For instance, we cannot prepay municipal bonds. You can't. You have to pay them on time, because people have invested money. It wasn't until Chairman Boyce insisted that the city relented and allowed one town hall meeting. But they put the word out, the citizens were not going to be allowed to speak, so we had a very small turnout. Chairman Boyce stated to me that evening, and at least one city council member, and to the group at large, that he was expecting the city to have more town hall meetings to allow them to present and answer questions. These have not happened. If they do do anything, it will be public hearings, which meet the minimum standards, would not be at convenient times, and lack all of the council members who need to hear from the citizens and hear the facts. I'm asking you, my county Commissioners, to please postpone this vote for 90 days and insist that the city have at least two town hall meetings during that time. Invite Mr. McCullers to come back and attend. Put out the true facts and costs. Allow the citizens to ask questions and voice opinions. There is no urgency to this vote. If the city so wants to sell, that offer will still be there in 90 days. Please do not take the approach that the city must have public hearings. The city residents are also county residents, and we implore you to simply table this for 90 days. I know it is not the county Commissioner's job to run the city, but I'm asking you to please not condone their actions by voting tonight to approve the purchase. Please table it for 90 days and give us citizens more time to push our city leadership for the town hall meetings and the facts that we deserve. Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Okay, thank you, sir. And Merry Christmas to you.
The next speaker is Nancy Farmer.
I'm Nancy Farmer. I lived in Powder Springs for 49 years, saw, loved the city. I'm a councilman, I'm on Ward 3, and I was elected this year. And I came here to ask y'all to postpone the vote on the purchase of the Water Department. And I ask that because I feel, I've been talking to my citizens, and I feel like they have not had time enough to understand what's going on. We haven't had enough town meetings. When we do have a town meeting, they ask a person and they let them ask one question. Sometimes they'll let them ask two, but they don't even get to speak for five minutes. And they have it also, when a lot of people are at work, they need to have it a little bit longer, but, and I'm not as articulate as Patrick is, but I do have a passion for what I'm saying. And the city needs to wait and let the citizens understand the pros and the cons for selling the Water Department. the Water Department. We need to find out what's good. Now, that thirty million dollars, I've heard it too, but I have never seen it in writing that it's going to cost the city thirty million dollars to fix our water system. And I think that if y'all are concerned about what the citizens think in the city, y'all will be kind enough to postpone it so that we can let every citizen come and know what's going on and why we need to sell it or why we need to keep it. That's all I'm asking, postpone it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That concludes your public speaker.
Okay. I think we have one Boy Scout here who's supposed to come up here and ask some questions. There you are. Come on up, young man, let us know who you are and what Boy Scout troop you belong to.
What percent of the budget is spent on new projects?
Ooh. Nope.
Where's Bill? Bill not here?
The reason I'm-
Buddy's here.
The reason I'm pausing is that we have multiple buckets of money that we take, that we use to pay for projects. We have the general fund, which is, we get revenue from the property owners, and we use some of that money to pay for projects. We also have something called a special-purpose local option sales tax, which is the tax you pay when you go out and buy something. That tax revenue is used to buy certain projects that have been approved by the voters, okay? Then we also have federal money called community development block grants, where they use money to either build buildings or to rehabilitate them. So percentage-wise, we'd have to get back to you on that one, I think.
Buddy might have a number, you have a number, Buddy?
You are correct that most new capital expenditures will be done in splopped. So we have roughly, I mean, it can average on cash flows, but we anticipate about one-hundred-and-twenty-five million a year on a four-million-dollar general fund budget, so.
That's a good number to start with.
Yep.
So you need to tell them, the chairman, your name, because he always likes to know your, oh, your name. Yeah, go ahead and tell them who you are.
I'm William Zhao.
Okay, what Boy Scout troop do you belong to?
I'm ten-eleven.
Ten-eleven, okay. All right, well, I want you to come back someday when you're an Eagle Scout. All right, I'll still be here, I'll be waiting for you.
But he promises not to wear the red jacket.
Don't say anything about the jacket, he really loves it. So, anyway, thanks for coming tonight, and again, we appreciate all you're doing, because you're the future leader of our country, one of them, and we look, and I can't think of a better program for leadership than Boy Scouts, so keep up the great work.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Merry Christmas. Okay, I think next we have the consent agenda. I don't believe we had any revisions from this morning, did we? I gotta, I gotta make sure I get the right wording here. Okay, so that, I move to approve the consent agenda and authorize, oh, I'm gonna, before I get a second, I'd like to scroll down through it, but I'm gonna go and make the motion, and then I'll get a second, then we'll call the question. So I move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. I have a second, all right, so we'll go down through all the consent agenda items here, and then I'll go ahead and call the question. Okay, any discussion? Call the question? The pass is five to zero. Thank you. All right, on the regular agenda, and the first item on the regular agenda is Mr. McCullers from the Water System.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you know, we've been working for quite a while with staff from the City of Powder Springs to come up with a, to determine under what circumstances it would make sense for the Cobb County Water System to take over service to the current Powder Springs customers. We believe we've come up with such an agreement. I would point out that the City of Powder Springs has not approved this formally yet. They'll be required to have a thirty-day advertisement period in the newspapers, according to state law. So regardless of what action you take tonight, this does not, in fact, go into effect until after Powder Springs approves it. In summary, the Powder Springs system serves about five hundred and fifty city properties and another two hundred, two thousand properties in the county that are outside the city limits. As was mentioned, because of the inefficiencies related to these smaller systems, we have much lower rates. Powder Springs rates are generally about thirty percent higher than the Cobb County Water Systems rates. I would point out that the only exception to this is for irrigation-only customers. We have a very aggressive program to discourage irrigation waters.
You might point out why that is, Steve.
Well, because of the lack of a large water supply, and we've done an excellent job, the per capita waste of water use over the past ten years has gone from about one hundred and twenty-three, one hundred and twenty-four gallons per capita per day down to just over a hundred. So we've done an excellent job, we feel.
We're part of a metro-wide area of using-
We are indeed.
Right, so we're just part of that effort.
All the other counties surrounding Atlanta are in the same mode. Current water rates, the city systems would generate about, the city customers would generate about five point one-five million dollars in annual revenues for Cobb Water, whereas the cost to Cobb Water to provide the service to these customers would be about four point six million dollars per year. You can see the difference between those two numbers of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. We propose to pay Powder Springs five and a half million dollars from water funds over ten years for the purchase of its infrastructure and customer base, and that's the, that would be at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, which is essentially break even for us initially. But as our rates go up, it'll become a benefit to us, and ultimately, because we'd have a larger customer base, we'd be able to spread our fixed costs, including our bond costs, over a larger area, larger customer base. If approved, implementation will occur sometime between April first and July first, and at that point, Powder Springs customers would begin paying Cobb County's rates. We believe that as many as eight current Powder Springs employees are interested in coming to the water system to work with us, and part of this package, we request four additional positions. Those four positions are in customer service and finance. We're gonna need new field people, but we have so many vacancies among our field staff right now that we can fill those vacancies, and we may be coming back at a later date to request additional field personnel. So we come tonight to ask you to approve the agreement, any questions?
Yeah, would you go over the thirty-million-dollar infrastructure amount? That was, I believe, the number came from a third party that was done by the city of Powder Springs?
I haven't seen the context of that number. I believe it to be replacement, the replacement cost of the Powder Springs system, not sure. I did suggest that rather than replace, that we do have new technologies where we can line pipes at a much lower cost. I would certainly not say that we can spend seven hundred thousand dollars and replace all the pipes that were going to be replaced for the thirty million. I'm not sure where the disconnect was in that discussion, but we'd never claim that.
Well, I remember at the Powder Springs Town Hall, the thirty million dollars, the mayor, was that a study that your city did as far as what the cost was to replace outdated infrastructure?
Yes, sir, that was through Walpert.
Yeah, could you come up here to the microphone, please? Well, Mayor Protem, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, sorry.
Don't tell Mayor Thurmond I made you the mayor. You have a great relationship here.
I don't want his job. Yeah, that was a study commissioned through Walpert Engineering by, it was done by Eric McDonald with Walpert, and I think that was for the total replacement cost of the system. I don't think we ever said that we had to spend that much money for current maintenance. It was more of a-
This is replacement of infrastructure that, data infrastructure, sorry? All the infrastructure.
Right, yes, sir. So that's the number they'd come to us.
So your infrastructure's worth thirty million dollars?
I think so, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, currently.
How old is the system currently?
Most of the pipes, I think, were done in the seventies and eighties. I think Mr. McCullers had said that it's all of a similar condition to what county pipes in that area, that period are. Most of them from the seventies and eighties.
So it's an even better number, because I thought the thirty million dollars, what I heard, and obviously I was mistaken, was that that was the cost to replace infrastructure that we knew had to be replaced, but clearly I misheard.
Well, that's where I was going with my question, because I was gonna ask Steve, based on the age of the pipe, I mean, on the normal, you know, your capital replacement plan, when would pipes of that age be normally replaced?
Depending on the pipe material, sixty to eighty, sixty to eighty years, reductile iron pipe, which is a good bit of what they have.
So there's still, there's still at least, what, twenty years or so left?
What we did is we looked at the inventory that they had of their system done, and it's basically the same age as our pipe, same materials as our pipe, very, very similar to ours. So we just, we treated it as we would ours, and that's how we ran the costs on this thing.
Commissioner Burrow, I'm sorry.
So the seven hundred and fifty thousand in the book here?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that to do what you were saying, to line the pipes for every-
No, ma'am, that's five hundred and fifty thousand, the annual payment, the payment for the upcoming year to buy the system, the five hundred and fifty thousand plus two hundred thousand for the new positions that we asked to be created.
Okay. So the fees that the residents will be paying, will, will that cover any replacement or infrastructure over time, or?
Yes, ma'am.
By what, by when? Would we break even or be in the, ahead on that?
We anticipate that the cost to service their customers, including replacing pipe as needed, repairing pipe as needed, cleaning pipe as needed, will be about four point six million dollars a year. That includes all of that, that operating cost, including capital.
But it doesn't include the personnel?
Yes, it does.
Oh, it does?
Yes.
The new, additional personnel?
That's everything, yes, sir.
The aid employees?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you. Well-presented, Steve, and thank you, Mayor Protem, too, as well. I mean, it seems to me it's a win-win for everybody, and the fact is that it still has to be approved by the city council, and therefore there would have to be public hearings, as you stated. So I don't think it's our job up here to get into their business, but only to listen to our director, and he believes in support of this, correct? So I'm in support of going and approving it and let them decide what they want to do afterwards.
Can I, can I just say very quickly before you, we've had several, we have four town hall meetings a year. This has been the topic at several. Commissioner Boyce, you participated in one. Whether we have more hearings, another meeting, obviously, we're gonna meet all the legal requirements, but whether we have another town hall meeting, usually we have one at the beginning of the year, that'll certainly be a topic we'd be open to discuss again at the next town hall meeting. But, you know, it's, as I said, we feel like we've gotten enough feedback from the public. We've got a lot of support. Who doesn't want to pay less for their water bill? So, but we will, we're all open to more public hearings, it's still to be determined.
Commissioner Cupid.
I concur with that statement, and it was shared by Commissioner Weatherford. I shared this as a topic of one of my town hall meetings, and when residents learned about the rate reduction, they were supportive. Ironically, when I first came into office, I had a very active gentleman in his community tell me that this would be the one issue of which he would remove me from office unless we actually took over that system. So I find it interesting, six years later, for us to be venturing down this path, and this was not my initiative of retaining my seat. But I do think this is a win for both the City of Powder Springs and for Cobb County, and I'm in full support.
All right, so if there's less than further discussion, I'll let Commissioner Cupid, yes, you're the liaison, so I'll let you make the motion.
Thank you. I move that we support this agenda item to purchase the water distribution and wastewater collection systems currently owned and operated by the City of Powder Springs, and the creation of four new positions or up to eight new positions within the water system.
Second. Second, any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next up is DOT, I believe.
Good evening. We have four items for consideration this evening, and the first one, we'd like to request that the Board of Commissioners amend a previously approved action, which approved Change Order Number One Final to the contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of eighty-four thousand, thirty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents for thoroughfare improvements on Cobb Parkway, US Forty-One State Route Three, at Cedar Crest Road, Altria Church Road, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Call the question.
Thank you, sir.
All right, that's not me this time.
All in favor, raise your right hand, and the pass is five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second item is to request the Board of Commissioners approve a developers' memorandum of agreement with Mountain Prize, Inc., Pepperwood, Inc., and Race Track Petroleum, Inc., for roadway improvements on Canton Road at Liberty Hill Road, project number X twenty-six oh-two A, and authorize the acceptance and appropriation of a developer's contribution in an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and forty-two cents, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents in a form substantially similar to that provided under separate cover and is approved by the county attorney's office.
Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, as we discussed yesterday, this was stipulations from zoning, zoning conditions, zoning case from two and a half years ago. So this has been a long time coming, and I'd like to thank you and your staff for getting us to this point and the next agenda item. And I did speak with the attorney for Race Track earlier today, and once we approve these, they are ready to sign. So with that, I make a motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises, LLC, in an amount not to exceed the two hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and forty-two cents for roadway improvements on Canton Road at Liberty Hill Road.
Commissioner Burrow.
One question. Once this is approved and the developmental agreement is signed, and we have the bid for the project, what's the start date or anticipated?
It'll be a couple months before he can get started. He's got some work already scheduled ahead of this, but it'll be probably the spring, if not before.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
And the last item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Detection Engineering Technology, Inc., in an amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars for flashing yellow arrow signal upgrades.
Commissioner Rod.
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. All right, any further public comment, Miss Dance? All right. With that, we're gonna take a recess, so Commissioner Burrow can get the energy to announce all her announcements tonight. Just kidding, just kidding. All right, yeah. So with that, I'll turn the, I'll turn the microphone over to Commissioner Burrow so she can make her announcements.
Okay.
Appointments, I guess, do the announcements later.
Yeah. Well, these are appointments, but they don't require a board vote. Well, these are appointments, but they don't require a board vote, so they're announced publicly. And I would first like to reappoint Alice Summerhour, Frank Wiggington, and Susan Tucker to the 1% Sbloth Citizens Oversight Committee, reappoint Charles Kaninski to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. That's a vote? Okay. The reappointment of Tom Lemay to the Electrical Advisory Board, the reappointment of Barry Abernathy to the Heating and Air Conditioning Advisory Board, reappointment of Rose Wing to the Historic Preservation Commission, the reappointment of Ronnie Rains to the Home Builders Advisory Board, the reappointment of Aaron Mulgrew and Jack Siegel to the Keep Cobb Beautiful Board, the reappointment of Joan Bloom to the Neighborhood Safety Commission, the appointment of John Hightower to the Neighborhood Safety Commission, and he will be replacing Bud Stembug, who has moved out of the county, and the reappointment of Jordan Ball to the Plumbing Advisory Board, and the appointment of Sarah Cant to the Animal Services Board. And Sarah is the, also the director of the Humane Society of Cobb County and replaces Joy Edelseizer. And then I would like to appoint, reappoint Helga Hong to the cemetery, make a motion to approve the reappointment of Helga Hong to the Cemetery Preservation Commission.
Second. Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero. Okay. And then tonight is a night I get to announce the, the new assignments for the commissioners, their respective liaison positions to the staff. So if you'll look at the very carefully crafted document on the screen here, I'm just going to have you read those over, rather than me sit down here and... Let's just let you read the appointments here. With that, I will turn the floor over to Commissioner Rod for announcements.
Well, since I know what's coming after mine, I'm just going to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow?
About 20 minutes of bliss.
He's yielding, he's yielding his four minutes to you.
My four minutes and 59 seconds.
You'd be disappointed if I didn't do, on my notes.
You have, there's eight minutes left, to be under an hour.
Are you still using your time, or am I? Let's not have a fight before Christmas, boys and girls. Okay. One thing I do want to remind the board, because the, because Carl at the airport changed the schedule for appointments, everybody's term comes up now, our appointments come up the end of this year, so we need to reappoint if you haven't already.
Appreciate, thank you for reminding us of that.
So I'd, I'd like to say thank you to two very special folks that are retiring this year, Bill Higgins from the Water Department and Bill Shelton from DOT. They have both done an outstanding job. I don't know what we're going to do, what, I don't know what I'm going to do without them, but we wish them well in their retirement. We will definitely miss, miss them, and we definitely appreciate all their hard work over the many years they've been here. Next, we have a picture, number 73, from our Superior Pet Adoptions. Mr. Shaughnessy, who is a 25-year veteran of the Air Force, adopted this cute little Yorkie named Midnight.
Wow.
And Midnight is a 10-year-old female Yorkie who now has a forever home, thanks to Mr. Shaughnessy. This is number 73, thanks to the leadership team at the Cobb Animal Services and the generosity of Superior Plumbing. So if you are a veteran, or if you know of a veteran that needs a dog or a cat, free adoptions at the Cobb County Animal Shelter. And also, this now, through December 21st, if you donate an unused coat, jacket, hats, or gloves to the Cobb County Animal Services, you can have the adoption fee waived. So go pick out your new best friend, bring some hats and gloves and coats. And then also, January 5th, Saturday, January 5th, is Bring One For The Chipper. It's a Keep Cobb Beautiful, Keep America Beautiful program that was started many years ago. So if you want to recycle your Christmas tree, your live Christmas tree, there's several Home Depot locations and parks across the county where you can take your tree. You can just go to keepcobbbeautiful.org. And I'd just like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a prosperous and happy New Year.
Hey, Commissioner? I'm going to let Commissioner Cupid go.
Want to take this opportunity to thank Commissioner Weatherford for his service over the past four years here on the Board of Commissioners. I can certainly say that he and I could probably both take a couple medals for a lesson in character development, as, you know, we had a pretty rocky start here on the board, and what we have come to find is that we agree much more than we ever thought we would or could.
Amazing, isn't it?
It is. It's been a wonderful journey. I thi, I think we can probably also get an award for being one of the most practical thinkers that sit up here on the board.
That's like a...
No joke, in a sign. But, you know, serving up here is like 99% perspiration and 1,099% humiliation. I mean, you're serving the public good. You really do take your slice of humble pie every day, and at the local level, you're working so much behind the scenes beyond what many people will ever know to make this county continue to go and to let the people of the county be able to focus on other matters other than what we deliberate upon every day and every week up here. And so I just want to take opportunity to commend you, Commissioner Weatherford, for the opportunities we've shared here and outside here, whether it be in Savannah, and at ACCG meetings or in other spaces. I wish you the best for today and also tomorrow, knowing tomorrow, we do have zoning, so we'll see you tomorrow, and you have got a very controversial zoning calendar, but for the many days beyond tomorrow, I wish you the absolute best. You're welcome.
And I'm just going to, my comments, then turn the, the microphone over to Commissioner Weatherford, because the first shall be last and the last shall be first. We're losing two, two people on January 1st. One will be Dana Johnson, who is the head of Community Development. And there, there are very few shoes that are very, almost impossible to fill, and Community Development is one of those. And we are very, very fortunate that when County Manager Hosack retired, those shoes were filled by Dana Johnson. So it was a seamless transition, and Dana brought a lot of energy and innovation to this, to this position, and the county has been the benefactor of his endless, endless hours of sacrifice trying to make this a better place for businesses and the people who live here. So we want to wish Dana all the best in his new position with Business Development Chamber of Commerce, and actually, this is really a secret plan by my to infiltrate the chamber with the county personnel. So let's not get, let's not, let's not kid ourselves that there's a motive to this. But Dana, we want to wish you all the best. You've done, you've done a remarkable job, and I know you're not going to be a stranger, you're always welcome back here. And then the second one is, I'll always remember the famous agenda items on the tethering of the dogs. And that's the first time where I looked over to my left and realized, no, these, these two commissioners, they really see a lot about each other, and they carried that agenda item. That was their first time that I saw them work together, of many, many agenda items they worked together to make this a better place. So, you know, we're never too old to learn and to appreciate, it's really what's inside of us that counts more than anything else. So I'm going to miss you, Bob. You're, you're a man of integrity and trust and hard work, and I echo Commissioner Cupid and sure the board here, we wish you nothing but all the best in your days ahead. And with that, you have the floor.
Thank you. It's bittersweet that this will be my last public address, my last newsletter this week. You know, hopefully Cobb is a little bit better from me having been here. I feel like we've all worked hard together. I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners. Whether you believe it or not, this is not a part-time job. You know, I was on the City Council for many years, and that was a part-time job. This is a full-time job, and it takes all you have, all you can give, and then some. So I honor all of them as well, because they have stepped up and done that as well. The employees of this county are second to none. We have the best employees anywhere in this country, and I'm so proud of them. And Chairman Boyce has come in, and we've become good friends and sounding boards and a fellow Marine, and he's taken some bold steps, and I applaud him for that as well. You know, I always did what I thought was right. I always did what I thought I could do by looking myself in the mirror the next day. And as we're going to realize tomorrow, zoning is the worst day of our lives. I remember my first zoning, and it was very controversial, and many of you probably might remember it, there were 300 people here for that zoning, about 50/50, some had no Bob shirts on. There were different colors, you knew who was on your side and who wasn't, and it was about 50/50. And it was the sprouts out on Dallas Highway, and I looked at that, and it'd been held up for 12 years at that particular corner, and I said, that's a perfect place for something like that to come. And it passed, and it was controversial. But now it's the most performing sprouts in the metro area. You can't find a parking spot, so there must be some people that like it. So I look back, and even though it was controversial, I'm very, very proud of, of that and what this board did. And, and zoning is something you can't win. I mean, the best you're going to do is half of them hate you and half of them like you. And most people, it gets personal when you try to build something next to them, and they don't understand all of it. They don't understand it like we understand it, and the thoughts and logic we have to put behind it. But I'm proud, proud to say that, you know, of the zonings, I went back and looked, because of the compromise that we all have to do on a daily basis, on any kind of zoning, whether it be commercial or residential, there's over 250 acres of green space that were preserved through that compromise, rather than allowing them to go in and clear-cut and do what it is owned. So working with staff, working with commissioners, I think that's the way to do it, and people still don't understand that. The other thing is, we all worked for two years now to buy Parks Bonds money. That was hard. You, you would think people want to sell their land, they said they did, until you offer it, and then they say, well, I get more than that. So we worked very hard. In District One, we have another 250 acres of park space and green space. So I'm, I'm proud of that as well. You know, I leave with my head held high, and I want to thank my friends, my family, my, the employees, my better half, Lisa, for putting up with me, my coworkers up here, and everybody that's helped me along this journey. And I'm not going to go away, I'm just going to not be at every meeting anymore. Probably not going to be at any meetings anymore.
You promise? We don't want to see you up there at that podium.
Me and David Birkenstein are going to go up there together, and we're going to talk about some things. I'm going to be watching you people, though, I'm just telling you that right now. This has been one of the greatest honors I've ever had in my life to serve the citizens of Cobb County. And to work with this board, and to work with the employees. So God bless all of you and wish you a Merry Christmas. And I also want to close by remembering, we honored an officer tonight that fortunately didn't have to give up his life to protect the citizen. Tomorrow, we're going to honor an officer that did give up his life, Officer Flores to Cobb County. So never forget, when you talk about public safety, every day, they don't know if they're coming home or not. Every day, they have that hanging over them, and every day, they run toward the fire or toward the bullets or toward the danger, because you don't have to. So don't let a day go by that you don't thank them. God bless you, and God bless America. God bless Cobb County.
Merry Christmas. We're adjourned. Merry Christmas. We're adjourned.